Good evening. Welcome to the August 29 Troy City Council Meeting. This evening, we're pleased to have with us Pastor Jack Manturek from the Big Beaver United Methodist Church, who will provide us with an invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise, Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just wanted to remind people before the next time this body meets, two things are happening. Labor Day weekend, which if you're working jobs, you're thankful for that, but we still want to pray for those who are not. We also want to recognize that 9/11 is two Sundays away, and we want to remember it's the 10th anniversary. I know that many houses of worship are having special services during their morning services, especially on that Sunday, and that evening, I know that there's a service at St. Anastasia, which is about seven or eight churches involved, and many other houses of worship. So please remember those who gave an ultimate sacrifice in service to their country, and those who were innocent victims of that violence. Let's pray. Our gracious God, we're thankful for the blessings that you give to us even in difficult times, and we pray for our world, which emanates from a desire for peace, a desire which comes from peace within our hearts, that spreads into our homes, our neighborhoods, our communities, our nations, and then to our world. And so we pray for peace for each person. We pray, Lord, for jobs and meaningful employment, which provides for families. We pray for wisdom to prevail in the decisions of this council and other governing bodies, that wisdom would prevail. And we ask, Lord, for a blessing that shows your graciousness, and may we reflect our gratitude in return. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you for the reminders about the special programs coming up. Thank you. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Howerlag?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Slater?
Here.
Quorum present. This evening, we begin with public hearings, and the first item on the public hearing is for the establishment of an Industrial Development District, IDD, for Intiva Products LLC at 1401 Crooks. And Mr. Licari, Nino Licari, will present for staff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. That's pretty much all I have, so if you have any questions, I... No, I'm just kidding. Intiva, if you recall, they bought out part of the Delphi Lighting Systems on 1401 Crooks Road. They're making quite an expansion. They bought some more systems from Delphi. They're expanding their operations. They intend to buy about $3 million worth of personal property. They've renegotiated their lease, expanding into the building. They were not occupying the whole building. Now they're going to be occupying close to 75% of that building. They have, I think it's 184 existing jobs. They're going to add 35 more new jobs there, so there's a job factor involved in this abatement also. They qualify under the current council policy for six years' worth of abatements on the $3 million worth of equipment. Their total tax bill on that would have been about $113,000, of which $35,700 would be city taxes, so their savings would be 50% of that. They'd save about $56,600 in total taxes, and just under $18,000 in city taxes. We would be creating the district first in this particular instance. They're only applying for the personal property abatement. There's no improvements to the structure itself. So we would ask that you create the district if you have a mind to grant the abatement. If you're not going to grant the abatement, there's no reason really to approve the district at that point in time. And with that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Council, do you have questions for Mr. Licari on this before we open the public hearing? No, hearing none? Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that is here on this item that wishes to speak? Mr. Peters?
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. I just, I'm not opposed to job creation, but I was, before in the past, Delphi was under financial hardship in the past, and I think they were close to bankruptcy, and I was wondering how that's playing out, and because I'd hate to see us get stuck with, you know, so...
This is not have to do with Delphi. They bought the building there that Delphi was in previous to that, but this is on a different matter completely. If you want all the data on the approval of the district and approval of the grant, it is in our agenda. You didn't have a chance to see that?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Well, I was just, I know when I heard the term "Delphi" come up, because I knew that they were...
Mr. Licari just mentioned the location, because that's the location that one of the Delphi operations was at, their lighting.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Anyone else on this item? Did I get that right, Mr. Licari? Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing, return it to the council table for a resolution. This is to establish the district.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
It's all that Troy City Council hereby establishes an Industrial Development District, IDD, for property known as 1401 Crooks, Troy, Michigan, 48084-7155, parcel number 88-20-32-226-037, in accordance with City Council Policy Resolution Number 2010-08-173. And be it finally resolved that Troy City Council hereby directs the city clerk to forward a copy of this resolution to the State Tax Commission Treasury Building, PO Box 30471, Lansing, Michigan, 48909-7971.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramini, that we approve the resolution establishing the district as printed and read. Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
It's wonderful to see that Intiva chose Troy, happily lives here, and some of the workers live in Troy, reside in Troy, and that they've had fine growth, so we wish them much success.
For the discussion of the item? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howerlag?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our second public hearing is the granting of the industrial facilities exemption certificate for Intiva Products. Mr. Licari will present before we open the public hearing.
Thank you again. I just wanted to add two quick things. Mr. Patel is here from Intiva, should you have any questions for him, and I wanted to point out that the resolution for the IFEC does include the new language from the State Tax Commission, so we won't have to be bringing that back to you. And basically, that language is a guarantee that our IFT role doesn't exceed 5% of our ad valorem role. At this point in time, even with the granting of this abatement, we'd be less than 2/10 of 1% of our total role, and that's pretty much all I have there. Thank you.
Questions, Council, for Mr. Licari on this? Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing, return it to the council table for a resolution, and if council had questions, Mr. Patel is here if you want to ask anything.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltramini?
I have no questions, and would move the resolution to grant the industrial facilities exemption certificate as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed, granting the industrial facilities exemption certificate for Intiva Products LLC. Discussion on the motion?
Mayor?
Councilman Howerlag?
I imagine it will come as no surprise to many people in this room that I will be voting against this, and make no bones about it, this is absolutely a gift by this city of $56,651.15 to Intiva Products LLC. And you may say, well, Mr. Howerlag, we're not actually giving them money, and I would tell you that if every other taxpayer in this city has to pay their property taxes in full, and this entity gets to pay half their property taxes, that's a gift. That's a forgone tax, and the city is actually driving that by this resolution this evening. So the reason why I vote against these things is because it's inherently unfair to the other property taxpayers who pay their property taxes in full. And it's interesting that the city council would take a position against eliminating the personal property tax in this state, and yet they go around and they pick and choose who can actually have an abatement on their personal property taxes. If you actually would like to give this entity a tax abatement, then I would implore you to actually give everybody in this city who has a business, all business property owners should get a tax abatement. If it's good for one, it's good for all.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Although my colleague called this a gift, we know in fact that it's a tool, and it's a tool that every other municipality has and uses. In fact, Troy, for many years, chose not to participate in this and lost a great many good businesses that would have rather come here and flourished. And I'm pleased that we finally recognized the need to use this tool prudently, as we have done tonight. We will continue to see growth from this company, jobs, and again, jobs for our own residents. So I will be supporting it.
Mayor?
Councilman Howerlag?
With all due respect to my esteemed colleague on the other side of this table, it's important to note that the personal property tax is an impediment to actually establishing and growing businesses in the state of Michigan, and this body actually took a position opposing the elimination of the personal property tax in this state. And so I would tell you that, again, yes, it's good that they're here. It's good that all businesses are here. If we can find a way to abate everybody's taxes, then it's in our best interest, because it makes it easier for these entities to do business in the city of Troy, as opposed to having to move to a low-tax state like Wyoming or North Dakota, Alabama, Georgia, and so on and so forth. So I think we actually need to take a look and see how we can make this a more business-friendly city and state for all businesses, and not just one here and one there.
I note that in approval of this, Intiva is going to purchase machinery and new equipment valued at $3 million and add 35 new jobs to the existing 184 existing jobs that they have in Troy, and they had to meet the standards which the state set up for allowing for this abatement. Many businesses within Troy would not meet that standard. They have to be investing a certain amount of money and be a certain type of entity to receive that. And so with other communities doing as such with theirs, the amount of the abatement is actually, the city taxes amount was only $17,866.93. The total abatement amount is $56,651.15, but the amount that's being abated as far as city taxes is much less. When this was set up as Public Act 1908, 1974, as amended, it was precisely so that this kind of thing could happen, where companies could invest, purchase more machinery, expand, and add employees. So I look at this as a benefit totally for our community. For the discussion of the item? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howerlag?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. That concludes the public hearing items, and so our next item is public comment, and I remind folks in the audience that this is on items that are on the agenda or items that are not on the agenda. So if you had something that was in the agenda you wished to speak about, it would occur at this time, or if you had some other matter that you wished to speak about, it comes at this time. I will call on those that signed up first in the order. There were four individuals who signed up, and so I'll begin with Mr. Reinhardt. Good evening.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to make an announcement that as some of us Troy citizens meet some of these people, employers that don't pay no taxes, we give them a real warm welcome in the local bars. We make them feel really good. So having had no complaints from the police, so apparently, we talk to them pretty sternly about them using our Troy as a waste dump. Also, I'll just let you know, remember Magnus Genius, whatever that guy was, a couple years ago, he was the president of the Troy Chamber of Crooks? Well, he made a free website for Detroit and helped them donate a million dollars. How come he can't do that for this city? Aren't we looking for some type of communication director? But we give these guys tax breaks so they can give it to Detroit. And here's a nonprofit newsletter. The reason I got these things circled, because I talk personally to these people and tell them, if you want to donate to the city of Troy, do not let the city of Troy touch a penny. You pinpoint it exactly to those people, because the city of Troy will co-op the money. And you want to know how I find these people? Here's 40 and under, and this is from Miami. So if any of these people show up in our city politics, we know where they're coming from, okay? I track people from all over the city. Now here's Troy Patch. Now please, people, donate some stuff to Detroit Patch, so he doesn't look like a talking point for trust. He needs other things to say other than protecting trust. By the way, if those other people representing you, Mayor, I would be ashamed. They call people, Dave Lambert's up there calling people blatant liars. Why would he go out, you know, maybe he's drinking too much of his own wine now. Also, here's Troy Patch telling me he can't argue with my logic, but he won't put my stuff in the papers. And this other paper, there's, I'm still being harassed by our little confrontation, and every time I get one of these things, I double down, working on this, why this city is nothing but crooks. When I talk about Detroit police, I'm not talking about the little guys, I'm talking about the guys on top. Those guys set the standards for this city, and this standard's got pretty low standards, as far as I got to go. How many tickets does the Citizen Patrol give out? How much did it cost us? Do we got some type of secret Gestapo that goes around squealing on people? Because we're slowly getting their names, okay? And also, you also got a police car that leaves this city at a regular time down 14 Mile, okay, down Dequender. I don't know, how come we got so many police cars? We could head that way. And this winter, when we notified the DPW about a hole over there by Kenny's Party Store, they said they couldn't fix it till a city truck went in there and got wrecked, demolished, okay? This city just gave away $50,000, and now you're going to say we're not going to have snow removal? What type of city is this? I know what, screw the homeowners, and all you guys are screwing the homeowners. And I tell you what, I called up the Boys and Girls Club, they're an international thing, asked about pedophilia inside the Boys and Girls Club. The response, I'm barred from going on the Girls and Boys Club, so I'm looking real close at the pedophilia in the Girls and Boys Club. Have a good day, Mayor. And by the way, I go to a place across from that park on 15 Mile for my Kool-Aid. If anybody wants to follow me, we don't talk politics there, we just talk good old Troy. So you guys have a good time. I'm going to enjoy you, Robin, when you're up here. Have a good day.
Next, we're going to hear from Nicholas Maher. Good evening, Mr. Maher.
Good evening, Your Honor. I have a 39-year resident in Troy, and once in a while, I get a little upset, and right now, it's the sprinkling band that we supposedly have, and I know, I don't know whose it's for, but what annoys me is when I go to Somerset every morning to walk, the sprinklers in the middle of Coolidge, which belongs to the city, are running. I can't run mine at those hours, and I guess you can water at any time, but not with automatic sprinklers, is what the way the law is. I called a week ago, made a mistake, called the Water Department, and they said they would relay the message, but nothing's happened in a week, and I don't understand it. I couldn't do that when I was working. My superiors wouldn't allow it, and so I come here before you tonight to ask why. We're trying to cut water costs, and the city's the biggest offender, probably. That's my story tonight.
In response to public comment, we'll address that, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Peters, you signed up to speak under public comment?
Good evening, Council, again, and Mayor, Council, and folks of Troy. Yeah, I'm not opposed to Delphi. I hope to make a lot of money. On this, there's something here about the advisory board, which I think you're going to talk about a little bit. I just hope that we just don't blindly dismiss this just because it's pressure or something. I hope, you know, based on if it's effective or not, and that would be one of my things here. Also, I'd like to know a little bit about the rail system that's coming here. Honestly, I don't know much about it. I've looked up on the internet a little bit about light rail systems. I know they got them in Denver, and Seattle, and Norfolk, and New Jersey, and they seem to be becoming very popular, and I'd like to, you know, I know Mr. Savage has been kind of adamant about this, but unless they can come up with a way, do a way with the $4 gallon gasoline, which I don't think is going to happen very time soon, or figure a way to put carbon back under the earth, which I don't think you're going to be able to do anytime soon, you know, maybe that's, I'm not saying this to the cure, but I, you know, if it's pretty popular in most areas, I think, you know, at least we should maybe look at it. I don't even know if the one, from what I understand, the one that's in Detroit just goes the eight-mile road, so, you know, I'm just kind of oblivious to this stuff right now. I'd just like to know a little bit more about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Fred Eckout signed up to speak. Fred?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Management.
Good evening. Feel free to adjust.
Thank you.
There you go.
Do that. Just wanted to follow up on a couple of items that we discussed last week at the meeting. I found regarding the disclosure of employee pay and benefit and concessions levels, I found that our neighbor to the west, the city of Birmingham, openly discloses city pay on their website. It's part of their budget, it's part of their budget agreement, and I have that data. If you'd like, if you'd like it, I'm more than willing to share it with you. I know you have a study group on this. But for instance, in the city of Birmingham, it's right here, the city manager makes $118,000 a year. The city clerk makes $74,480. The police chief makes $98,980. It's very open and accessible information that's shared with the public. So I offer that to you as a point of information in this ongoing effort of disclosure. I also think that this issue of disclosure extends beyond just the achievement of a budgeted task. So it's, disclosure extends far beyond the achievement of any single-year or multiple-year budget agreement. The second thing that I noticed at the meeting last week was that we didn't really take advantage of elaborating on one of the larger successes that the city has recently achieved in the re-establishment of Troy Days in the form of Troy Family Days. That's, I think, a real feather in the cap of the city, that they were able to bring back a 40-year tradition that a lot of the city's residents enjoyed and participated in, and I think that might have been Councilwoman Fleming's intention in asking the vendor last week to speak a little bit about that. So in my opinion, we sort of missed an opportunity to celebrate, you know, one of our successes. Lord knows that the city has been through a number of difficulties over the last couple of years, and we could certainly use, I think, a little more discussion about some of the more favorable events that are now happening in the city. Thank you.
That concludes those that sign up to speak. Mr. Savage?
Good evening, Council. I'm sorry I didn't put my name down, but it was certainly my intention not to speak tonight until the abatement issue came up, and I hear the name Delphi. Now, my memory goes back many years to a meeting here that was absolutely crowded with residents, and the issue then was the Delphi abatement. And as I recall, probably 99% of the meeting, of the people who spoke at that meeting, were opposed to the Delphi abatement. And at that time, I wondered why, for the small amount of taxes, what was then the largest auto parts supplier in the world, the amount that they were going to save on taxes was not going to defer them from coming to Troy. That was going to, that was a decision that was made long ago, whether they got the abatement or not. And I'm also looking at this company, is whether the $56,000 is going to make the difference between them coming to Troy or not coming to Troy. I would doubt that, because I don't think $56,000 would be the determining factor. However, going back to the Delphi abatement, it was a split decision of the council, and it was a four for the Delphi and three against. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Schilling, but I believe you were on council at that time, and if I remember rightly, you voted against the abatement. I wonder what happened in the meantime. Also, at that time, I believe Mayor Jeanne Stein, I think, was the mayor at the time, and she opposed it. I would also note that following the election, two of those incumbents that were running took a pretty sound beating. That's all. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on public comment? Seeing none, we'll go to response to public comment, and I'll begin with what Mr. Eckout said about the Troy Family Days. The two individuals that came to have the fireworks approved were given an opportunity to speak during public comment. I came in with them and asked them if they'd like to talk about it during public comment, and they chose not to. And it doesn't mean that they might not come and speak during public comment at another time just before the event. It is not a city event anymore. It is run by a private organization, and it's going to be at the Zion Church grounds there, and so it is completely with other entities. It's not a city event, although it is an event that is held for residents, but also residents from other communities as well. Does anyone else have anything else that they want to respond to with public comment, or do you want to just move on? Mr. Zerlay?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to have Director of Public Works, Tim Richnack, respond to the sprinkler issue on Coolidge Road, and I'm sure he'll be coming out any moment.
I see that he did speak with... I see that he did speak with Mr. Mohar.
Perhaps the audience would like to have a response.
Yes, right.
I'll respond to that. I spoke with Mr. Moore, and the location that he has, we have had issues over the last few weeks. If he reported it last week, staff were off for the week that handled that. Going to have Mr. Bovenseep contact Mr. Moore tomorrow with that particular location, with the specifics of the issue. But that's a location we've had some trouble with in the most recent past. So we appreciate when those things are reported to us.
Why are on the subject there? Would you clarify for us, I know that some residents have contacted me recently, received an email, and I clarified it back to the individual. They were commenting that Firefighters Park was being sprinkled, and I commented back that it's watered from the pond that is there. It is not running on our system here. Could you?
Yes, that's correct.
Tell about the systems where they're sprinkled, but it's not with the regular watering system?
Well, Somerset Apartments is completely sprinkled on either pond or well water. There are portions of Somerset Collection that are also, and the park you just mentioned, the city pumps out of the lakes there. And sometimes you'll see them running during the day, because we have to do maintenance on them, and we do that during the day. But those typically are run in the evening hours because we get so many calls. And we've always operated the majority of our sprinkling systems in the past at night and haven't had any issues with disease or any other turf issues, you know, in the city, which is another question that we typically get or concern that we get, that a lot of people are told that it will destroy their lawn if they sprinkle at night, and that has not proven to be the case.
Thank you. Anyone else have, Councilman, Mayor Protem Kerwin, did I see you?
I did, Madam.
Asking for the floor.
Yes. The manager, or Mr. Miller, or Mr. LaCarre. It was mentioned by the last speaker about split decisions, how rare that is to have on council. But we've had split decisions from time to time. Would you agree?
Yes.
And even on some major decisions. Currently, in this economic climate, I'm wondering if this abatement tool is not of service. And if we didn't have that, what would happen in our attempts to attract and then also to keep certain businesses here?
I'll speak.
Thank you.
Of the economic development issue in terms of generalities, and then perhaps Mr. Miller can talk in terms of specificity. But in terms of generalities, in the state of Michigan, Michigan Economic Development Council has decided that, through the state of Michigan, that tax abatements are an economic development tool. And there's about 400 municipalities in the state of Michigan that utilize this tool for tax abatement. Now philosophically, it would be great to say, you know, in a perfect world, if I were in a vacuum, everybody should get a tax break, and that way, the level, there's a level playing field for new companies that come in compared to those that are here already. And that does have some merit. However, in the real world, when we have to compete with other municipalities, and the essential motive on the businesses that look at their balance sheet is profit, we become part of their pro forma, and a municipality that offers tax abatement makes it less expensive for that business to operate and save municipality A. If Rochester Hills gives abatement and Troy doesn't, and a company can go to Troy or Rochester Hills, they'll probably go to Rochester Hills for the abatement. If Troy and Rochester Hills give the abatement, so there's commensurate economic incentives from both municipalities, then other factors come into consideration, you know, utility, location, traffic, types of infrastructures that we have and so forth. So in a general sense, absolutely, it would be great to give everybody tax abatement. But in a real sense, if you will, when we have to compete with other municipalities, they give tax abatements. If we don't, I think that we would lose out on those businesses, and they would go elsewhere. And the proof of the pudding would be in the tasting. If I recall, our mayor, Tor, that I was directly involved with going to leave the state of Michigan, if we did not give tax abatement in Troy to them.
Thank you. I had one other question, and it was simply because we had a sample listing of certain salaries on the website. Didn't we have a sample listing of our salaries on the website? Can't you still find it? One time, we had top 20, but then, of course, we don't have 20 anymore.
We do.
Then it went to about 17.
I also think the League of Women Voters every year puts out salaries of certain individuals.
Anybody could pick it up right outside, outside this building, in the library, and everywhere else. So those salaries readily available. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, then we'll go on to postponed items. There are none regular business items. The I-4 is streamlining of boards and committees pursuant to direction of city council. And as I explained this to several people that inquired about it, I said, it's actually evolving. We began discussing this last October. We had some sessions on it, and we talked about certain committees that we are keeping in place. They are required by state law or by charter. And some of the committees that served us in the past on specific issues, our specific items, were no longer serving in that capacity, and so we were going to dissolve those. And then we also had a brief discussion, but it's not part of this resolution, about asking some of the people that are on several of these committees if they wanted to serve on a committee which we briefly talked about it being called a Lifetime Learning Committee, but that was to be fleshed out and determined at another time. The other thing that we've included in the resolution is, of course, indicating in a letter to the members of the board, thanking them for their volunteerism and expressing appreciation for their service. So that's where we are on this one. Now, we have resolutions A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, because each of these committees was established by resolution, so therefore, there must be a separate resolution for each of the committees. They read the same, except for the name of the committee.
Chairman, I'll move.
Yes, Mayor Protem Kerwin.
A through G.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve the resolutions for dissolving of the committees in A through G. And the committees are the Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities, the Advisory Committee for Senior Citizens, Ethic Issues Advisory Board, Board of Canvassers, Cable Advisory Board, Troy Days Committee, and Youth Council. Discussion of the resolutions?
Mayor.
Councilman Howellak?
Move to separate A and B from the rest.
A and B separate. Okay. Sir Seckett?
Support.
Moved by Councilman Howellak, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we separate A and B from C through G. Discussion of the separation motion? The vote on the separation motion, then, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Belchemini?
Yes.
Motion passes to separate. Discussion on the motion, then, A? The vote, then, Mrs. Bittner, on A?
Councilmember Howellak?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Belchemini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes on A. B, the discussion of that, of B?
Mayor.
Councilman Fleming?
Just want to reiterate the discussion we had at the last study session regarding the Advisory Committee for Senior Citizens. We basically agreed that it would continue as a volunteer group if they so desired. They would have a building or a community room at the community center. They could have a room free of charge to meet. They would appoint their own committee members. They would keep their own minutes. And if they have an issue, senior citizens have an issue, they're certainly welcome to bring that to the city council as part of public comment, and we would address it at that time. But the main thing is, if this committee continues, wants to continue to meet, they have a room free of charge, and they have access to the city council through the public comment section.
Further discussion of the motion?
Mayor.
Councilman Howellak?
When we first discussed this, I expressed my discomfort with disbanding these two committees. And I believe that these two committees represent constituencies that need to have a voice, if you will. And I don't believe that lifelong learning appropriately allows for that voice to be heard. The issue, I think, should properly be addressed through the frequency of the meetings, but I know I'm on the minority of this. I just wanted the opportunity to vote against the disbanding of these two committees.
Further discussion of the motion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner, on B?
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Belchemini?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Howellak?
No.
Motion passes. And then the vote on C through G inclusive?
Chairman?
Discussion of that, of those motions. Mayor Protem Kerwin?
I simply wanted to speak in general about the new form of volunteerism. We saw mention tonight about Troy Family Days. Here, we had a city committee with city resources that met on city property. How wonderful now that volunteers can meet with the church at Zion, with many, many community members, many volunteers who had served on this committee in the past, including senior citizens, who are really making a wonderful give back to the community, yet not using any city resources. And that's really ideal now. We've seen Friends of the Troy Public Library do the same. We've seen Historic Commission do the same. We've seen a number of this kind of merging. We know that the majority of all members who serve on these committees are senior citizens, and that senior citizens may contact us at any time, whether they have the volunteer committee now formed or any other way, are welcome, welcome to do that. There are some compelling needs in this city that we are trying to address. And for those folks who did spend one night a month coming to City Hall or coming to the community center to meet on these committees, we could really use you in the community with our fire and our police safety crews. We're really trying to get some eyes in the community, being aware of what's happening in the neighborhoods. We'd love to see some in Neighborhood Watch. And if that was, in fact, the three hours a month or the couple hours a month that were donated, we can use those in different ways. This city was built by volunteers, and it's a true, the true heart of the community is through our volunteers. So this is meant, and no disrespect for that, we do have the names, addresses, and emails for those volunteers in the past. And should an issue in any one of these areas come up, we would encourage city staff to contact these members for input going forward.
Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Belchemini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion C, Resolution C through G pass. Next, we'll go to the consent agenda. Does anyone on council have any items they wish to have exempted from the consent agenda?
Mayor.
Councilman Howellak?
J-4A and J-6.
J-4A and J-6. Any others? Okay, could we have a resolution to approve all others except J-4A and J-6, which we'll take up right after? Councilman Howellak?
Resolve that the Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of items J-4A and J-6, which shall be considered after the consent agenda items as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Howellak, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve all the consent agenda items with this vote, except for J-4A and J-6, which we'll take up after this vote. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Belchemini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howellak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Councilman Howellak, J-4A?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to inquire about the 25%, I believe it's contingency, and wanted to know why that number is so high, as opposed to, say, 10 or 15%.
Mr. Zerlag?
Mr. Vandette, our city engineer, will be more than happy to respond to that matter.
Mr. Vandette?
Good evening, Council. Normally, on a paving project, or any project for that matter, our contingency is 10%. This particular project, it's a mill and overlay project, which means we're going to be milling about three inches of the asphalt off the pavement and then putting three inches back. When we do the milling, we're going to expose the old concrete underneath. And we don't really know what condition that concrete is in until we mill the pavement. So it's difficult to estimate how much base repair is going to be needed before you start. And then you mill it off, and you see what you have, and then you make the repairs. So we put a, we put a number in, a guesstimate of what the base repairs are, but we really don't know, and we have no way of knowing accurately until the milling work is done. That's why we have a higher percentage, 25%, to cover that unknown condition.
And procedurally, if you, if we didn't have a 25% not-to-exceed amount in this resolution, what would the process be to actually get more money for that project if it was needed? Would it simply be another resolution from the city council?
Probably. If we went with our typical 10%, we might exceed the 10% and have to either stop the work and come to city council and ask for more money to complete it, or complete the work and then come to city council and say, we're slightly over, and sometimes we are. That occurs, you know, every now and then, and we might be 2% or 3% over the contingency. That's happened a handful of times in the 10 years that I've been here.
So the concern is actually with the portion at the beginning of the project. Is that not correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So there really, it would simply be a matter of, you know, if you, you would effectively know that, that you were over the 100% plus the 10% early on, and wouldn't, I would think, not need to stop the project?
Well, after we do the milling, then we have to determine what base repairs are needed. Do we know we're going to be over the 10%? Not necessarily, because the project has just started. We haven't done curb replacements. We haven't done catch basin replacements or storm sewer repairs. The final quantities are far from being determined at the beginning of the job when we do the milling. So at the beginning, we really don't know if we're going to be over that contingency or not until the job is nearing the end, and we know what the final quantities are on the, all the other items that go into it. There's about 30 contract items that go into this particular job.
Mr. Zerlag?
From a mechanical perspective, and what has happened in the past, is that when there was a project that was over the authorized amount by city council, it would be either Steve Vandette and Gary Shripka, or Steve Vandette and Brian Murphy, or Steve Vandette and Mark Miller would come to me and say, you know, John, you know, the contractor's working, the next council meeting is in 12 days from now, and if he shuts down, it's going to cost more to have him come back and finish this work unless you authorize us to spend more than what council allows. And then I generally say, okay, we'll spend more than what council allows. And then I've got to come back 12 days later and say, please ratify my decision. Here's why I did this. So that's the other side of what would happen.
It just seems to me that the, the variation that we're expecting to have occur is in the beginning of the project, because, you know, at least that's what the memo is, and at least that was explained here, because what is more certain is what happens afterwards. Is that not correct?
I'm sorry? What is?
I said there's less variation in the later part of the project. The early, the early part of the project with respect to the milling and grinding The early, the early part of the project with respect to the milling and grinding is really where the variation is, and we can't pin down that number to a T, so to say.
That's correct, yes.
And so it, I just don't see how we wouldn't know earlier, rather than later, if we assume that everything from, you know, that, that is pretty certain is still going to be certain. Again, I know there's always that 5 or 10 percent movement for various unforeseen circumstances, whether that be weather, or something else, but my concern is not so much that we're throwing money away, but how do we know that, at the end of the day, that the low bidder is still the low bidder?
Well, in addition to looking at the low bid, we also look at the unit prices of all the items that are in the bid, and to check for any imbalance in his bid, if he bid way too low, or way too high for a particular item. One of the, one of the red flags is to catch an item that is bid unusually high for a quantity that has a lot of risk or unknown to it. That isn't, that is a flag that we would look at and evaluate that before we would award the bid. So all of the, all of the unit work items need to be in a proper range before we would say, "Okay, this is the low bidder," and we go ahead and award the project.
Because, well, I only have bulk numbers here, I've got, what, five lines, and, you know, it's difficult to, and of course, I'm not an engineer either, hence my asking you these questions, but at the end of the day, if there's, you know, more than a couple percent, well, in this case, if there's more than 10 percent of a variation, then, then the question becomes, how do you know that the lowest bidder didn't just expect to make it up on contingency, which is kind of one of those continuing challenges in, in this industry?
The low bidder does not typically make it up on contingency. The low bidder, there's a variety of ways that, if a job goes poorly, we tend to get a lot of claims for extras, for everything you can think of. It's not typically, because we're the ones that direct what base repairs need to be made, and so the contractor doesn't make that decision on his own, he doesn't go out and say, "Okay, I'm going to use up all that contingency, and, and so I can make money on the project." Engineering personnel are the ones who determine what areas need to be removed and replaced based on their, observation of their condition once the paving is removed. So that, that is pretty strictly controlled. What contractors make their money on is submitting claims for extras, for delay, for material price increases that might occur during the project, all kinds of different things, but as far as the quantities are concerned, we control that, we keep, keep that in check.
Any others on this item? Can we have somebody move this resolution then, for J four A?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve Resolution J four A. The vote?
Mayor.
Discussion, sorry. Councilman Horlak?
I just wanted to say, I'd be a lot more comfortable if this was a 10 or even a 15 percent contingency, and that if, if management believed there was going to be an issue that it come to us before, so we would actually be, you know, going to take ownership for this thing one way or another, at least we would know and be part and parcel of that, as opposed to getting it after the fact and said, "Oh, well, you know, this contract here that we bid out at $260,928 is actually closer to $330,000," and, you know, it's just good for us to be involved in that process. But be that as it may, the rest of the resolution seems okay, but I'll still have to vote against it with this language.
Further discussion? Councilman Fleming?
I concur. I think that that's logical. If we put 10 or 15 percent not-to-exceed on this would be consistent with what we've normally done in the past, I could support that, but 25 percent, I concur with Councilman Horlak, this is probably too much of a variation just to put in this, this resolution without any further control on it from council.
I recall that when we worked on the section of Rochester Road that just finished up, there was a major problem with something that was underneath the surface, that none of the other utilities, no one knew until after the, the work was excavated, and then it had to be come back for a, a change, a change order, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Zerline?
I believe so, yes.
And is that why you might be anticipating, and then in this section of Rochester, from Chopin to Larchwood, that the same thing might occur, or might not occur? And they're only going to spend as much as absolutely necessary?
I was about to ask Mr. Vandette if the 25 percent contingency is in line with other contracts that we awarded that had similar street conditions and required milling.
To answer your question, yes. Whenever we do a mill and overlay project, we increase the contingency to 25 percent. We are currently doing a mill and overlay project on Buckingham, just off of Northfield Parkway, and we just milled that street today, and if you want to see some very, very poor concrete, drive out there and take a look at it, and that's impossible to see until you mill the concrete, or you mill the asphalt off of it. And we've done probably eight or nine projects over the last three years, all have had 25 percent contingency, and for the reasons that I, I've stated.
Okay. Councilman Beltramini?
This money isn't being spent without oversight. We have professional staff that, whether they have the authority to authorize that ahead of time, and it is money that's in the budget, or whether they authorize it and give us the chance to make that checkmark, it's not being spent without oversight. We have professional staff that stands there and looks at, literally, how many cracks and how many pieces of gravel are showing up, and makes that decision. That's why we hire them, and 25 percent is the normal contingency for this kind of repair. I, I think after this many years, to want to amend it at this point is kind of extraordinary.
Mayor.
Councilman Horlak?
I would actually say the word is extraordinary is in and of itself extraordinary. I would use a somewhat less demanding word, if you will, but I remember when, when we started getting these 25 percent contingencies, and I, I wasn't comfortable with it then. The, my discomfort is not necessarily that, you know, staff is spending money unwisely, but we need to, we really need to protect the integrity of the bid process, and maybe even not so much on this bid, but there's still, you know, you're talking only an 8 percent or so difference between bidder number one and bidder number two, but when it's even tighter, then you have an issue of, you know, one of the bidders, and you don't know, because you can't do the project multiple times and pick the cheapest bidder then, you know, the project is done, and one bidder does it. So you don't know that one bidder may, may hold the city to every little nickel and dime, and, and any little nickel and dime that's not in the project is, needs the, the actual approval of the city, and another bidder actually may be looser, and so at the end of the day, and of course, then there's the issue of which pieces, which pieces of the, of the bid, which we don't even know, because we don't have the bid detail here, which pieces are, are, you know, hourly rate, which mechanical operator, and so on and so forth, are the pieces that we're going to go over, or need the contingency on. And so my concern is primarily with the integrity of the bidding process.
Mayor and council?
Mayor Protem Kerwin asked for the floor. I didn't hear before. You want Mr. Vandette to answer first?
Go ahead.
Mr. Vandette?
Thank you. The contingency is not part of the bidding process in any way, shape, or form. The contractor is not aware of what the contingency is going to be on the project. We set that contingency after the bids are open, and we bring it to you for approval. The bidder, all the bidders have no idea what the contingency is going to be when they've been on the project.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Well, it sounds like my colleague at the end of the table really was concerned about the bidding process and the integrity of that. I do recall many times when, when something has happened in bid, we have purchasing, look at, we have a very good process which will then determine this person has been off, or this company has been off before, and that, I mean, think of mowing, how many different times we've gone through that. So I think to look at the purchasing process may be of interest. In terms of this, however, we've heard a lot about engineering being in place, we've heard a lot about streets and drains, and I think it's wonderful that we have such professionals who do that. Again, for the bidding process, we can look at purchasing and, and see if there's anything that needs to be done in oversight. I'm simply grateful that we do have professionals who guard that for us. Just a reminder, this was budgeted for, that budget was approved, and I'm ready for the vote.
Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Horlak?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Councilman Horlak, you asked for J six, also the contract extension for banking services?
Thank you, Mayor. The comments we're respective of this are much simpler. I just believe that after, and I read the memo, I read all the material background information, but I believe after, after 12 years, it's, it's time to go and, and look and see what else is out there. It's interesting, because only two of the banks on that list, actually only one of those banks, I believe, on that, on the list of the original bidders, is still in existence in its current form, that being Comerica. This was originally bid with Old Kent Bank, so even that's changed, so, and of course, the, the value of this has increased dramatically, and I believe that the issues with the accounting interface could, can, can certainly be incorporated into any contract with any bank, this is certainly the 21st century, and, but my concern is, is simply that we, we should actually look, and if we don't do it now, we should certainly do it in two years.
Further discussion on this item? Could we have a resolution then on this item? Oh, excuse me. Mr. Zerline?
I was going to say that, I meant concurrence, that we should take a look at bidding this in, in two years. I spoke with Mr. Darling and the finance staff as well. We're very shorthanded now, and it would not be the time to go out and bid, especially with the vacancy in the finance director's position that is going to be permanent, but we all thought that two years would be enough to, to get us back on our feet, have the new finance people in place, be familiar with what's going on, and then go out for bid.
Okay. Can we have a resolution for this item?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Beltramini?
I would bid the contract extension for banking services as written.
Do you second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the contract extension banking services as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Horlak?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Motion passes. I move to suspend the rules in order to add an agenda item. Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin, that we suspend the rules. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner, on the suspension?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Horlak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Motion passes. I move that we have a study item on the cost effectiveness of the Early Retirement Incentive Program, ERIP, and other best practices.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin, that we approve the study session as mentioned. Discussion? Sir, can you wait till we're in the vote, please? Thank you, because she has to record this. The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Horlak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for waiting. Do we have council, refer, council comments? Anyone have an item? Councilman Horlak?
Just two quick items. One, I was pleasantly informed today that two companies, Broadgate and Vigilant Technologies, made the list of Inc. Magazine's 500 fastest-growing companies, and so that's definitely a privilege and an honor to have them in our community, and that's an example of kind of incubating companies, and we hope they continue their presence in this city. Second item is, I was also informed over the weekend, and checked it out, that, and this just may be a matter of, of, of time and waiting, but the video replay of the last council meeting is not available on the city's website.
Okay, any other comments? I was glad that Pastor Mantra mentioned about the special program, I don't know if it's actually going to be a service, because it's a combination of different churches coming together at St. Anastasia on 9/11 at, in the evening, I think, 7 o'clock. They are going to have more information out on it so that we can all receive it, but I think that it certainly is worthwhile, and certainly worth remembering. I was glad he mentioned that at the beginning. I asked him about if we're going to get email or something about it, because I don't know all the details, and then we can mention it. Okay, any other items? Okay, then we'll be in recess, and we'll do the study item in the other room. Okay, then we'll be in recess, and we'll do the study item in the other room.